No.
Wasn't in either, that's.
Yeah.
Wrong one.
Oh wow.
Yeah.
Are you going or are you just?
Amanda is the junior class sponsor over at Holcomb.
Oh really?
Kind of by default that I get to help oversee the problem.
I have three cards for you guys to sign. One for Terry and her family and one each for the rodeo.
How's Terry doing?
She's still okay, she went back to work this week.
Yeah, for what she's been through.
Yeah. Yeah. So I'm going back.
Yeah. No deal. That's tragic. Yeah.
They would, it's a part of a child. Essentially speaking, losing a grandchild at the same time.
Yeah. It's got a lot of short laded people upset on those chairs.
There's always a lot of them like to put it way down to the bottom. I've seen fellow people put them way down there, I don't know why.
I did. But I did.
Did you get it figured out?
When we go out there.
Yeah, but.
I feel like I'm.
There's a chance that uh the other panelists won't have video, they might only have audio.
Okay.
Don't like.
Oh shoot. My kid will like it.
I don't think, I don't think tomorrow night we'll check the car over there for sure. We'll know tonight if we will. I think. I think he's just verbally presented tonight.
Well, they, they, I have a PowerPoint.
Oh from John?
Yeah.
Oh.
Is that the one that's here?
Uh.
No.
Somebody come in right behind me.
Yeah, he's still gonna be remote.
Yeah, I don't think he was coming, he was planning on you originally, but then I don't think he's just gonna join by Zoom tonight. Somebody came in behind you there for the board meeting?
Well, I'm sure if he was bored being in it though, looked like he might be.
He might be here for some.
I guess just.
I so proud of myself.
North door of Tuesday's board meeting.
This north door?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Whether it's windy, rainy or something like that, we could.
Walk all the way around?
And I know you can limit it.
Yeah, we can program and set that out.
How about we start these with you guys since you're already creating notes and the. Assembly cards for the two.
Right.
Oh yeah.
Very good. And now for Terry. All right. I need board help, but it's not an official duty of board member. But I have been requested to help write an English two paper sharing some of the board views. The girl's Angel Rios, I don't know her. And here's, I thought after I get finished eating, I'll read the thing to you. She has three questions. Anyway.
Board views on.
I do either.
You believe me to speech?
I just read your.
Sorry.
She found my board, my board sign in and I can't even find it that far.
Not the resolution, but the tables.
Oh, you lost.
Oh no, how do I do it?
I had the PDF that he, the.
I sent it to Lance.
Okay.
All right.
Because I screwed up the webinar when I made it.
A webinar?
I thought I followed instructions, they did not. So there is a possibility that people will not have video, will have audio of them, but maybe not video of the panel. We're not sure until.
If they still be able to share.
Yeah. Oh, so like we may not see Carla, but we'll hear her.
Oh, okay. I don't.
You're all excited?
Yeah, I'm like, yeah, I think we're setting pretty.
Stairs row back, just shopping.
I know. My goodness. I think that's a record.
Good thing I spoke to that.
Yeah.
I think we're gonna have to work, I think we're gonna have to work on pump for Joey though because of her shoulders.
I thought it. We'd rather not have any other changes on the screen. Okay, so.
So they can still.
We can hear.
Yeah.
Oh.
We just don't know.
And the other, yeah.
Hundred percent.
And I have the. And I have the. Oh, the issue. And I will say. Know what I did in the.
Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Do you need a different one?
No.
You can make it happen.
No, maybe.
Sorry.
Did you make these recommended yet, Mr. President?
Pardon?
You make these recommended yet?
Not yet. Gotta get through the, gotta get through the spring semester here first.
Oh no.
Then we'll, then we'll start having a conversation. We'd have to start that.
I was hoping you'd come to conclusion by now.
Oh, I'll get things taken on. Go get excuses. Oh, I think there's.
Only any.
It's going that way.
Forty-five.
Forty-five.
And we're gonna ask, does it really come in? Yeah.
All right, guys, pay attention because I have to have some help here.
Sounds like a personal problem.
It's a girl by the name of Angel Rios. Garden City is home to many students who were not residents of Garden City before attending school here. Many of these students rely on friends or the local bus system to get around town. What are some things Garden City Community College has done to ease these traveling concerns for students without a vehicle? Last question number one. Question number two. The towns of Lakin and Deerfield have recently enacted a public bike sharing program available to all residents within these townships. Are you aware of these recent changes to Lakin and Deerfield public transportation? Number three. Would GCCC be willing to work with Livwell, Fannie County to acquire a grant from Blue Cross Blue Shield Kansas to buy bikes and bike racks to enact, enact a similar bike sharing program that we have for taking your time?
Yeah, well.
Well, that's, I shut up, I got the answers to her, but I need your help. So, and what the deal is, she said in English two, and this is a big paper she's writing. Oh. So here were my answers to her. Angel, I will have to do a little research myself to give you good answers. I am well aware of the great Fannie County Transit System slide, you know, birth service is available to all persons living in GC. And I have used these muscles several times. Are you aware that there are several pickup and drop locations either on or close to the campus? Spell check, change the word to illegal. The last time I wrote that they were not charging for the rides, you should check out their schedules. I will also do additional checking. Number two. Prior to my being on the board, I believe that there was such a program in the college outside the west entrance of the BTSC. There were, there was a white bike rack and some white bicycles changed to the rack. They were, there were others located across the campus. The sign told students who to contact for the use. Perhaps it was sponsored by the SGA. I think they disappeared last spring after the COVID-19 hit GC and affected the GCC student classes as well. Number three. And this is what you guys need to help me out.
Yes.
The best place to start such a program, and I'm talking about all three questions, would be through the Student Karma Association. I see no reason why they could not spearhead this great idea for students. This is definitely the route that could be successful as that would be student voices working for our students. I promise looking at your questions so that I may give you better information. I will never, may mention this to President Ruda and to the other trustees. We are committed to work to the very best for our students. We have a board meeting against Susie. I will go act, get back to the ASAP. In the meantime, maybe you could do some contacts as well. Thank you for bringing this to my attention. Did you know I'm also a GCC graduate? And I owe us to ask her if I could give part credit for the English two.
Sounds good to me. Sounds like it.
Okay, is it true that, that we still have that program?
The bike program?
Yeah.
But it's just campus.
It's not.
It's just campus.
Oh, okay.
They just, they just.
But don't you think a place that, or do you think, I don't, you're not supposed to say we're starting, but don't you think? Do you think that the best place for her to start is the Student Government Association? I don't think the trustees is the place for her to start.
I think it started with the Student Government Association, pride vice, more vice to, to ride a crop tail.
Yeah, but I'm wondering if she knows that, that that bus service goes everywhere now, except I guess it doesn't go out the utility table.
Well, there's one stop right there by the gift lot.
Well, and they stop here and they stop all year.
Yeah, no, that was in the envelope. I'm guessing it wasn't, I'm sure, I'm sure you've already received.
Contact the transit.
Well, that's, that's what I told her. And I thought I could use yours.
Yeah.
So the last I knew, they weren't even charging.
I don't know if they charged.
Well, it was minimal.
Yeah.
You could get, you could get, you could get the, those, this punch cards at the center and like fifty, fifty, fifty cents.
They do coins and the.
Yeah.
Bitcoins.
So anything else I should tell her? Don't you think the place where it starts is Student Urban?
Absolutely.
I think it started the president's office.
She, so is it just about the paper or she only wants this to happen?
Well, when they want it to happen, I think it's her.
They're supposed to tell her what bikes are. Potential issues or ways to improve the campus.
If she wants to go citywide, she needs to go to the city commissioners.
Yeah, well.
Well, they've got that grant from Yonah as well, maybe they, they use those bikes to go citywide.
So anyway, any more suggestions to feel free to do this call or write to yourself? I don't know the word yet.
And I don't think that would be. It doesn't know if she is a.
And all blind names, nothing else. I think it could be a pretty exciting project.
Yeah.
Well, when I was in a, when I was on that transit board. I mean, it's a lot better now.
A lot of these towns, when I was up in Hazer yesterday, they had scooters that you could rent and ride all over town, drop them off wherever. But you just pay by your credit card.
Stagways would be fun.
With the Crown Center in Kansas City, they have, they just got a little deal and you pay wherever you want to go and leave it.
Yeah, sometimes they just leave it and then they just leave it in the park and. They're down in Texas.
So those on the campus were just to ride around Kansas City?
That's what we originally put them in there for.
Well, I never realized.
Some of the kids, they went over to like Dollar General. Okay, took them, they would use them to go to Dollar General.
Oh, yeah.
And they tried to keep them going too far.
Oh my gosh. Yeah. And they're still around somewhere.
One of them ended up at Walmart one time.
Did you? Do we still have the program now? They're just not out on campus.
No, we just haven't brought them out yet. It's a good reminder to do that.
I thought she found my favorite, my favorite fighting horse.
Should be.
Just smiled. That was two weeks ago.
You can see the year of policy governance stack. Cause we did an update. But it should be. You got it?
Okay, got it. What's your ballgame this weekend, right?
Should be. Should be. Pretty, pretty rough, we'll start the season. Good ones. Yeah, it takes two weeks. Better game.
It was fun doing that. Yeah. They're okay.
Yeah.
Both teams do.
Fifty-eight.
I'm so excited. They've just.
Making the twelve yard.
Yeah. You know, it's one thing to win a game but have the confidence and go.
I wanted that. I was at that, the next quarterback team that, oh, I needed to get that last touchdown so bad.
One kid made a touchdown and they fumbled going across the goal.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it should be, should be a better game this, than next two weeks. Actually, what, six? That's one.
One.
Or three. Ending is eight.
There was a man here watching the game, his son played on both teams, one on one.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah. There's also a couple that sat up top here from Maryland, whose son played, and they were here three weeks in a row. They stayed.
I saw them.
She had an accent, he was originally compulsive.
Oh, bro. Yeah, I tried to catch a few of those parents and pull them down there and get some food.
Did you get a chance to say hello to the mother and father of the girl from Hawaii playing basketball?
Yeah, talked with them after that last ballgame. Yeah. Yeah, they had just moved from Hawaii to California. So now that they were stateside, they said they could get to the games a little bit easier.
I wonder what Ray was thinking giving us beans and meeting night in a small room.
Speak fast.
And the meeting. That could be good fun.
That was not a request from me.
Why they gave us beans on a night we had a meeting, small room. Either one. And it was not going right.
She is going to join by Zoom. Okay, on the road.
Everybody has the same.
Annual report there for everybody along with the quick facts and that as well.
Anybody have an agreement with four days about the CNN classes?
Yeah, the, like the transfer articulation agreement.
Yeah, that we don't have to take some there.
Yeah.
Oh. I don't know what he does for sure. I'll just.
Smile and.
I always like to take a look at what other schools do there. Just some laser and bring them up here. That's one of the things I saw from Johnson County. Their board pictures and have for pictures.
Who oversees the production of this? Do you?
My marketing department pulls it together, you know, the, yeah, and between Carl and I, we've been working with that on what we want.
Yes. It is.
Yeah, we, you know, we spend considerable attention to what should be included. Just having that economic gives that. That's in this, it numbers if we're getting around.
And so they sign out their, their billboard of craft with all the beauty service and stuff.
Yeah, as the community colleges.
Yeah.
The Southwest, I guess, yeah.
They have.
Communities, yeah, yeah.
I saw an ad on, I mean, you see the other schools add on TV, but I saw Butler, you enroll for summer and then they'll give you credit for three, three of them.
Yeah. Yeah, there's, there's some unique things. Old Scott is waiving all student fees for next year.
Oh, really?
So they're, instead of doing some of the, instead of doing some of the student awards there through federal funds, that what we're doing, they're using the fair dollars. I'll charge your student fees.
Well, that's cheap.
Yeah.
Their financials aren't very good shape, so I mean, I'm, I guess it's kind of innovative too, but.
Right. Yeah. Why give away something there that you're already paying for? For about a grand, buy some scholarship on the outside of that.
Right.
It just, next year when the federal funding is out there, you have to charge it.
Yeah, I just, I think you start down that road of giving things or trying to make a, a game about it. You lose the value of what your school is and, and then they always expect, I mean, it's the same in business too, but you always expect something and they always.
Right.
And then when you take that away, you got to.
Then you're.
I mean, you do, and I mean, immediately like, yeah, it's, and so, you know.
There's a lot of conversations right now on the federal level about free community college, you know, and but somebody taking student, taking student loans away. Well, nothing's free and then what happens when the federal funding's not there or. You know, you have a change in administration and they're not going that same way. Well, it's just, you know, it's, it's not sustainable.
It's not sustainable.
Now they're complaining about Biden's new infrastructure bill doesn't include fourteen hundred dollars for every person. And how much is included for other countries?
Yeah, there's.
Get a little bit and they want it again. Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know where all this stimulus money is coming from.
Well, it's just borrowing, so.
I, I don't think.
Probably great.
I don't think I'm ever gonna get any and I can get any in a last up.
You have money for each of them.
But hey.
So like you said, the Democrats want to give everything free.
Well, they didn't give me anything yet.
The problem is, is I got, there's too many people that aren't getting it and there's people that are getting it. I mean, you know, that shouldn't, that's, I mean, you know, that's just.
Yeah, I have one daughter that gets and one that doesn't. Oh, by the way, in Liberty, Missouri, they have a three-year-old T-ball team. They play.
Three-year-old T-ball.
Yeah, they play for two innings. And I got a picture of the second inning. He did okay in the first inning. But the second inning, he started running off to the base. They said, no, stay put. You could hear his dad. Stay put, stay put, stay put. And his granddad. So then something happened. I don't know. So instead of him running this, the third, I, I don't know if they maybe just have first and third at home.
Yeah.
Anyway, he went over the pitcher and then ended up over a third. Well, his buddy was there too, so that was two on the same. Oh, they say it's just like an and, and file.
I was gonna say, Matthew, he played last year, summer, five-year-old, and they did three innings and three innings.
Up to your collar.
Yeah, Tim's in Spain.
It's just like, you know, when everybody goes after the ball, like it's just a rat race to the ball. Nobody stays in position, no matter how many times you tell them and. It's just by the third inning, it's like, okay, you guys, you can't do that.
And the darkest thing is, I mean, they, they've been practicing more. They've been home a little bit.
Yeah.
So they realize he's left in it, that they had to give him a right-handed bit, and that was tough finding a right-handed bit that little.
Yeah, three-year-olds, that's. I think that would be volunteering some other parents. Coaching for a couple of years.
I can remember one summer I was there, Christmas, we were in somewhere and I was with the boys and it was when, when they were first starting soccer for the, for the little kids. And the first time I saw Ben, he's the youngest one, and he was running all over the, all over the place like everybody else. The second time I was there, they had put him, he had volunteered to be the goalie because he realized he didn't have to run. I looked down there and you, I only got a for you with this once. I looked down there and he was going. Was darned by I don't know or somebody, but by the third game, that kid, and it's too bad he didn't decide he liked soccer because even as a kindergarten, he had the ability to, I mean, all those little kids would be running toward a ball and they would keep running and he realized the ball was shutting down. He would jump up above it, turn around, and he was the only one ready to go. I thought they're my old Americans, but he didn't like soccer very well.
Cause he had to run. Love ball plays, Butler, thirteen. And Butler's undefeated.
Yeah, they're both, they're both at first in our divisions, so.
She's done a good job.
She really has.
Better record than what, what, five seasons?
Yeah, yeah, at least, yeah. Yeah, she's done a really good job.
Do you not have a mic? Oh, is it there?
Yeah.
Oh.
That would have been a trip over there.
Okay, guys, I have six o'clock. Everybody ready? Okay, we're going to call this meeting to order from Garden City Community College Board of Trustees, April meeting. And first of all, we'll do a roll call. This is identify who's here. Marilyn Douglas.
Beth Jedro.
David Rock. Leonard Hibs, Blake Watson.
Can we check on Shanda?
I am here. We are currently between the interstate and Ellsworth, so give me about ten minutes and I'll be on a little more solid. I hope we can make it.
Shanda, do you want to try it again? We didn't hear anything.
We just turned off of the interstate heading towards Ellsworth. So I might be a little spotty for the next fifteen minutes, but then after that I should be good.
Sorry, Shanda, can you try that one more time? We were muted on our side.
Okay, we're out here for, between the interstate and Ellsworth, so I'm going to be a little spotty for the next few minutes, but then I should be in better shape.
All right, we heard you. Thank you. Please be safe.
I got a chauffeur, so I'm just sitting over here watching you guys.
Okay, awesome. Can you see us?
Yes, I can see you.
Yay. No worries, Carol, no worries. Okay, so I would like to, to give you kind of a roadmap of our meeting tonight. We're making a few changes on the schedule of the agenda. And so after my brief comments, we are going to have some introduction of new employees. And then the next item will be the SGA and the Faculty Senate reports. We're moving them up because of the length of our meeting. We'll give them a chance to, to speak. We'll be going into executive session at that point. And then the rest of the agenda should follow as presented, the consent agenda, the confirmation of monitoring ports, other ownership linkage and the various reports. All right, thank you. So comments from the chair, first of all, I'd like to just pass on our condolences to the families of the two rodeo athletes that passed away two weeks ago. The families of Cade, Sitch, Bullock of Johnson, Kansas, and Padley McCormick of Nebraska. Both young men were students at Oklahoma Panhandle State University in Goodwill, Oklahoma. Passed away Friday, March twenty-sixth on their way to our rodeo. I know that Coach Jim Boy and Coach Brock took that pretty tough. But bless their hearts, they were able to pull it together and they went down and represented Garden City Community College during those funerals in Oklahoma. So I really commend him and Brock for going those, lots of extra miles to show our, our sympathy. Secondly, one of our, our board members had a tragic accident this past couple of weeks, Terry Worf. I'd like to send all our prayers of comfort to her and her family. PTK had their induction ceremony this past Sunday, April eleventh. They had thirteen students that participated. And now they have forty-five new members since the beginning of the school year. That's pretty cool. Just a reminder to you guys, the legislative coffee will be held on campus this Saturday at ten o'clock in the Beth Pedro's Student Center. So it's a good opportunity to meet with some local folks and our representatives. So with that, we'll have introductions of new employees.
How are you guys doing this evening?
Hey, Colin. Good. How are you?
Good, good. So it sounds like you guys can hear me. I can go ahead and start. Consuelo Pena, can you go ahead and zoom on and we can see your face?
Can you see me?
Uh, no, we can hear you.
Oops, sorry. I don't know. My camera is not, my video is not, is denying it, so.
Okay, well, we can go ahead and, that's okay. We can move forward with that and I can do a brief introduction for you, okay?
Great, thank you.
Okay, Consuelo Pena serves as our new student services assistant. Prior to coming to Garden City Community College, Consuelo served as the head teller at Kearney County Bank. Consuelo has a passion for education as well as providing excellent customer service to everyone who walks through the front door of the Student and Community Services Center. So we're, we're happy to have Consuelo aboard with Garden City Community College.
Welcome.
Thank you. I'm glad to be bored. I'm very glad to be part of the team.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Bye.
Bye-bye.
Mark?
You're muted, Mark.
Colin, did you want to introduce Jeremy, I think?
Uh, yeah, I was waiting. I didn't know if Jeff Tatum was supposed to be joining us, but I don't know. Do you see him on here yet?
I just promoted him.
There he is.
There, there may be only a few people with video tonight, so if their video doesn't work, just continue with the voice. Sorry about that.
Okay.
Andrew.
Be the voice.
So Mark, do you want to go or does Jeff want to go?
I can certainly go and then, and then that'll give Jeff a minute to get himself sorted.
Perfect.
Do we have Jeanette with us? Jeanette, are you able to turn your video on? Maybe?
Say, well, can you hear me?
Uh huh, yes.
No, I can't do my, I can't, I can't do my video. It's, it won't let me. It says it's, the host has to disable it.
Jeanette, let me turn mine off and then you can try yours.
No.
It's probably not gonna work. It's only gonna work for a few people. Sorry about that.
Okay, so we have Jeanette Hernandez joining us and she is our new Fine Arts Building Secretary. She is a Garden City native and she attended the college here where she obtained an associate's degree in May of two thousand and eleven. She brings with her over five years of experience in customer service and clerical and secretarial, secretarial duties to her new role here at the college. And we're very, very happy to have her. She again is in the Fine Arts Building.
Hello, thank you for having me, giving me the opportunity.
We're happy you're here, Jeanette. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then we also have Lindsay joining us and I'm not, she may have the same video connection issues. But Lindsay is joining us. She is the new Math and Science Building Secretary. She is also a Garden City native. She, and also is an alum, got, getting a degree, an associate's degree in animal science from the college here. She brings with her previous experience in education, serving as a substitute teacher for USD four, five, seven for four years. And then also working in the main office at the high school for almost six years. So Lindsay.
Well, Lindsay. I don't, I also don't have video, but I hope you can hear me.
Yes, we can.
Okay, all right. Well, I, I want to thank everyone for having me tonight. I appreciate the opportunity to work at Garden City Community College and to give back to an institution that gave so much to me. So I'm very excited to be here. It's a very welcome change and I'm enjoying it very much.
Thank you for your kind words. That's awesome. We welcome you.
Thank you.
Your voice sounds just like your mom.
I've heard that once or twice, maybe.
Awesome. Thank you, Lindsay.
Jeff, are you on?
Yes, I'm on. I, I guess I'm having the same problem with video as everyone else. I assume that Coach Richardson is having, he's still on the field because we do have a big game on Saturday night with independents on the road. And when I drove by a few minutes ago, they were still out on the field. But I'll go ahead and introduce him right now, even though he's not on, Jeremy.
No, I'm, I'm here.
Oh, you are here? Well, good.
Yeah, I'm here.
Well, good. I, I appreciate your time of rushing off the field to get here. Jeremy begins his first season. Jeremy begins his first season. Here's the wide receiver coach here at Garden City. He's no stranger to the NJCA level. He's led three programs during his career. He's been the head coach at Joliet, Northern Community, Community Tech. And he, and also this past year, he was at Erie Community College in Orchard Park, New York. He's had his stops at, at high school, professional ranks, and also coached at the NJCA. As I said before, NAI, NCAA Division One level. And he also, which is a pretty big honor, he was also an offensive intern with the Minnesota Vikings in ninth, in two thousand and fifteen. And he's a Bloomington, Illinois native, played football at Joliet. And then moved on a fair amount to complete his college eligibility. And he's a proud father of three children. Jeremy, welcome to Garden City Community College.
Thank you. Happy to be here. Been welcome from day one since I've been here.
Jeremy, thank you. We appreciate all you do for our kiddos.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
All right, I think that that concludes new employees. We'll move on to report from SGA.
Hello, my name's Michaela. I'm the Vice President of SGA. So to start off with, Earth Day, which is the twenty-second, and we're having a campus cleanup from three to four-thirty. For, on, for the resident life picnic, we're on the twenty-third, they're gonna, we're gonna have a have them eat in the quad and depending on the weather, we're, we're deciding if we should put yard games out there too. For, on the thirtieth, that's the awards night for all the clubs. And after we're done with the awards, we're gonna have a bonfire. And PTK might change the date of the time capsule on that day. For the elections, we're gonna give the application out on the fifteenth of this month for the top five, and then the package is gonna be due around the twenty-second and, yeah. The next thing is allocations. We're gonna have the allocations on the twenty-eighth in the morning, or from two-thirty to four-thirty. And then on the twenty-ninth, that's gonna be all day. We're also revising the constitution right now. Other clubs, PTK is working on time capsule. Halo is having a fun day on the fifth of May. There's two new clubs, which are the Bookbusters and Motorsports. And Art Club is having a plant event on the twenty-second as well.
Any questions? All right, thank you very much. Keep up the good work.
Have a good day.
Thank you. All right, faculty report.
Hello, everybody. Sorry, I think I have the same video issue, so I'll just go ahead and get started. So it is the spring semester and close to the end of it, so as you may imagine, faculty and students are going a bit stressed and a little bit crazy just because of the end of the semester. But I think we're all doing a really great job. I know that many faculty are having conversations with their students to advocate for themselves and make sure that they start working on getting the grade that they want now, rather than waiting till the last minute. So a lot of those conversations are going on as well as, I know faculty and the division shares are working with the coaches to make sure that we have faculty come over during study hours and the study table to try and help our students as much as we can. So everybody's putting in the work to try to make sure that we end the semester with the best possible grade that we can. There's also a lot of other stuff going on just because of what the times are. I know that Michaela Garcia, who just booked the Vice President of the SGA Association, is one of my Bridges students, so Bridges students just had their symposium, they presented their research. I know we are also going to a lot of conferences. We've had a lot more professional development requests at Faculty Senate. So a lot of stuff going on here at the end of the semester, so really great things. And then for Faculty Senate itself, we're still looking at some policies as always. We're looking at the faculty policy qualifications and we're going to hopefully vote on that on our next meeting. And we're also working towards the faculty award luncheon that will be happening April thirtieth. So a lot of stuff going on. I did wanted to take just a couple of minutes before the end of my report to, to thank you and thank the administration at Garden City Community College. I did have a chance to go to the HLC conference last week. And I got a chance to see a lot of presentations by other community colleges, by other universities. And of course, there was a lot to learn, but there was a lot to, to read between the lines and to see how other colleges handled that pandemic. Gave me a really good opportunity to compare how we did. We obviously felt like we survived it and we did good, but it's really hard to know how good we did unless we can compare. And by the conversations that happened at that conference, I can really say that we were on average or even above average. I mean, this college did a great job and it's all because of the great leadership that we had. So I really do want to thank administration and you guys for all the support, for all the conversations and for always giving faculty a chance to, to voice their opinion. So thank you very much. I think that's all I've got. So if you have any questions, let me know.
Any questions for Perla? So I appreciate your, your expressions of appreciation and gratitude, but I have to tell you, it's a team effort. So thanks back to you guys for doing the hard work.
Thank you.
All right, we're members, I'm gonna pass out. This is our first trial of the monthly board assessment. So if you just want to take one and keep it at your side and fill it out at the end of the meeting. All right, at this time, we're gonna go into executive session.
This is Beth. Madam Chair, I moved at the board recess into executive session to discuss individual employees' performance pursuant to the open meetings exception for personnel matters of non-elected personnel which if discussed in open session meeting might violate their rights to privacy and that our president, both Vice President and Attorney be included in portions of the meeting. The meeting will resume here in the Endowment Room in forty-five minutes. I have six-twenty. What?
Seven oh five.
Seven oh five.
I'll second that.
So the motion and a second for executive session. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Adjourned for executive session. And let me clarify, we're gonna meet by ourselves initially and then we'll call in President Ruda, okay?
Will somebody call me, please?
Oh, yeah. Kind of forgot about you, I'm sorry.
I'm still here.
Got new guns yet?
No.
Damn.
Mark. I'm working some rest of the week always on. Um, nature break now. All right, we are back in session. Thank you, everybody. We are moving on to. Right, um, we have, we, well, we will be taking action on item E in the consent agenda. As a result of our executive session, item D is the extension of the present contract. And that will be a verbal item that we'll vote on. Hold it and then talk about it. Okay, that sounds good. Okay, so, um, that's the, that's how our, our business is going to come back from executive session is that items need So we are in the consent agenda.
I'm Jared. Um, request that we hold an E for further discussion.
I would also like to call items I and J. For the purpose of recusing myself out of that decision making, then we'll have the vice president take over for the management of those two items.
I move for approval the consent agenda with all of the items except E, I, and J.
I'll second that motion.
Did I miss one?
No.
Manager, I, I also request that we remove item F for further explanation and discussion of the resolution of the COP.
Sorry, I missed that.
Point of order, we need the person who made the motion and the person who seconded to both resend those before we can move forward with a different motion.
We can act on this motion and then have the first motion.
How about if I
Just resend.
I resend my motion and we'll start all over again. Did somebody second it so we can resend that?
I'll resend the second.
Okay, all right, go ahead.
So I, manager, can I, I make, ask that we remove item E for further discussion and F for further discussion. E for further discussion and F for further discussion. And then we also remove I and J.
And I.
So items I and J. For further discussion.
I will second that motion, Beth.
All right, so we have a motion to approve the consent agenda excluding items E, F, I, J. And we have a second. Is there any other discussions? Okay, all those in favor of approving the motion, please signify by saying I.
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 All right, roll call, go ahead. Yeah, Beth, I.
David, I.
Leonard, I.
Wake, I.
Marilyn.
Shanda, oh, Shanda, I, sorry.
Great. All right. I think we should start with F for discussion. Let's go ahead and open up the. The discussion and invite John.
Andrew, could you promote John Hosplis?
There aren't papers that you're. Yeah, those papers that we're going through.
It's not a problem.
We'll leave that up to John to bring it home.
He was, but. Due to he. And it changes my. But I think they'll be here later for the next.
Okay, can everyone hear me?
Yes, sir, welcome.
All right. Well, I understand that you missed me coming out and I appreciate that, but this is a very simple action item this evening. And the wear and tear on me, I thought it'd be good if we just did a Zoom meeting. I hope you don't mind.
We're good.
All right, so let me know when you want me to start.
Go for it.
The spotlight is on you.
Okay. Speaking of that, we'll get rid of that light. You have a packet. It was distributed. By Carla, I believe. And the first page. Should be a summary of bids received for the refunding bonds today. Yeah, very good. We received four bids. The lowest bid was from Country Club Bank that bid in association with Western State Bank. So then what we did was take these numbers and see what the results were refinancing the debt. So if you can turn to table three. And you'll have to let me know when you're there. I still have the summary of bids on my screen.
There, there we go.
Okay, so you'll see on table three. That the net cash savings based on the interest rates and fees supplied by Country Club and Western State. Is net cash savings is eighty six thousand five fifty nine seventy five. And the board may remember. That the estimate was sixty three thousand three eighty six. So there was a materially higher saving than we anticipated than what we anticipated. Which always is a good idea. Then on table seven. And just give me the highest one when you're there. The net cash savings was one hundred and eighty seven thousand three sixty one fifty. And the original estimate was one hundred and forty eight, six ninety three. So again, there's a material increase in savings. From the refunding. I would acknowledge that. That your local bank. Probably had a material impact, even though I don't know how many. Bonds that they bought. But we've seen local banks across the state step up. And have materially better bids than. Those institutions that didn't bid with local banks. So we're very pleased with that. Now, the very last page. In the packet that I sent to you. Is the official bid form. You have two items, only two action items tonight to proceed. One is to approve the winning bid by Country Club Bank and Western State Bank. And then the second action item is a resolution that authorizes. The bonds to be sold to those two institutions and allows the board, the board president, secretary. To sign numerous doc documents that would. Consume. This transaction. Any questions that the board may have for me at this point in time?
Always nice to save a little bit more money.
John, would you talk just a little bit, not to confuse people, but would you talk just a little bit about the. The price, the interest rate, and then the pricing?
Sure. And let's just pick the table. Let's go to table two. Okay, you'll see on table two where it says interest rate. Carla's like, no, wait a minute. How come these interest rates are so high? Yeah, and you'll see that the first three maturities at a three percent. Next maturity, two maturities that are two percent. And the last maturity is at a one percent. And that would what we would call an inverted yield curve, if that's what it was. But what we, this is the interest rate on the securities, but you'll see the column right next to it where it says price. For the purchaser. To get a three percent return on that November first. Two thousand twenty one security, they're paying you a price of a one oh one point three five. And the next column over, it says the extension. The difference between the par amount, two hundred and thirty five thousand. Is, and the extension, two thirty eight, one seventy two fifty, is three thousand one hundred and seventy two dollars and fifty cents. That's the premium you're paid for that. The actuarial yield. On that, actually, the first three maturities. Is. Point two five basis points, point two five basis points, and two point two five basis points. And I just remembered. If you want to go to the next, to the very, next to the last page, you'll see the bid, the original bid. From Country Club Bank. And you'll see what the yield percentage is for each maturity. And that's in actuality, your real cost of money. And down to the right hand column, you'll see that even though you're paying coupons of one to three percent. But if you look into the dollar pricing and the discount they charge, your cost of money is basically point six seven five percent. But the reason why, I always tell people, I always wanted to be an educator. The reason why people buy premium bonds. Is analytical, because if interest rates start going up. The value of your bonds does not go down as quickly. If it's a par bond versus a. Or a discount bond, no. The value of the bond doesn't go down as quickly if it's a premium bond as opposed to a par or a discount bond. So let's say that somebody buys this and puts it in their portfolio, but they want to protect, you know, their net worth. Then they would want to buy a premium bond, because if interest rates go up. Then the value of their portfolio or their net worth does not go down as much. So that's the analytical reason why we're seeing so many premium bonds out there. Being wanted to be purchased by the public. Now, no matter what interest rates do, these are locked in once you approve. The winning bid. And your cost of funds never change.
Thank you. Any questions for John on that?
Did that work out okay?
It's confusing to me, I won't lie.
Well, I just didn't want the board to get home and look at that front page and go, wait a minute, this doesn't make any sense.
Yeah, we want to make sure that happens, that happened, but it was broken down by both bond issues and as a total. Your cost of money is about point six five percent. And that's still unbelievable to me. Yeah, on the bid purchase form, again, it has a, the true cost of funds at point six, seven, eight percent. And. Now, that's just truly unbelievable.
That's the part I understand.
Yeah, if you're a bottom line person, it works out real well, real well. Your cost of funds is less than one percent.
Good job.
Again, tonight. You'll need to approve the bond purchase agreement. What we'd like, Carla, is to have that signed. By the secretary of the board and the chairman of the board, scan and email to us as soon as you can.
Okay.
And then approve the resolution and all those documents can come later, but for SEC regulations, we need to. Have the bond purchase agreement in our possession as soon as possible.
Okay.
Do we have to read the resolution?
Sorry.
Motion to approve the bid to. To the Country Club Bank with. With Western State Bank. And came in as the lowest bid. And also approve the resolution. Read it dry away or. Thank you, John. Once the motion's made, we can read it.
I will second that motion. Beth.
Read the resolution.
And to.
Yeah, yeah, so. Okay. Resolution authorizing Garden City Community College to enter into a lease transaction, the proceeds of which will be used to pay the cost of the refining of certain building. Improvements on the college campus in Garden City, Kansas, and approving the exec. Execution of certain documents and connection there within. Whereas, under the constitution of statutes of the state of Kansas, particular K S A seventy one dash two oh one, Garden City Community College, Phinn County, Kansas. The college is empowered to enter into a certain leases and lease purchase agreements for the lease and or acquisition of property. And whereas, the college has immediate need for refinance, a, a student housing facility on the college campus in Garden City, Kansas. The twenty fourteen improvements. And the student union bookstore and dormitory system revenue bond series two twenty fourteen. It is marked as the series twenty fourteen bonds that financed the twenty fourteen improvements and with the series twenty fourteen improvements jointly. The improvements and a lease purchase agreement funded as of May first, twenty seventeen by the. Buy in between the college and Clayton Holdings LLC, the twenty seventeen lease. That financed the twenty seventeen improvements, which further its educational and public purposes, but does not have sufficient monies on hand legally available to do so. And whereas, in order to refinance the improvements and the series twenty fourteen bonds and twenty seventeen lease jointly, the refunded obligations. The governing body of the college now finds and determines that it is advisable to enter into a financing arrangement involving a lease agreement. And the issuance and delivery of four million seven hundred and thirty thousand principal amount of lease agreement refunding certificates of participation, series twenty twenty one A. The series twenty twenty one A certificates and whereas.
I need to interrupt for just a second. There's a typo on the four million seven thirty. That should be written in as four million four forty.
Okay, so I'll restate the last, the, I'll just state that last paragraph. Whereas, in order to refinance the improvements and the series twenty fourteen bonds and twenty seventeen lease jointly, the refunded obligations, the governing body of the college now finds and determines. That it is advisable to enter into a financing arrangement involving the lease agreements and the issuance and delivery of four million four hundred and forty thousand. Principal amount to lease agreement refunding certificate of participation, series twenty twenty one A, the series point twenty one A certificates. And whereas, in order to facilitate the foregoing and the pay of the costs thereof, it is necessary and desirable for the college to take the following actions. One, enter into a site lease, also known as the site lease, with the college as lease of securities. Bank of Kansas City, Kansas, Kansas, also known as trustee, as we see pursuant to which the college will. Lease certain real property to the trustee on the terms and conditions set forth therein, a form of which has been submitted to the governing body for review. To enter into a lease agreement, also known the lease, with the trustee pursuant to the college will lease the project as funding the lease. From the trustee, which an option to purchase the trustee's interest in the project, a form of which has been submitted to the governing body for review. Three, approve the declaration of trust, also known the declaration of trust, by which the trustee pursues to which twenty twenty one A certificates will be executed. Excuted and delivered a form of which has been submitted to the governing body for review. Or to approve an official statement respecting the twenty, respecting the twenty twenty one A certificates. Evidencing proportion interest of the owners thereof in basic rent payments to be made by the college under the lease. To be in substantial the same form as the preliminary official statements respecting the series twenty twenty one A certificates. Here to for approved the preliminary official statement and together the official statement. And five, authorizing tax compliance agreement, the tax compliance agreement. Pursuant to which the college and trustee have and agree to comply with various federal tax requirements necessary to maintain. The exception from federal income taxation of the interest portion basically included under the lease. The site lease, the lease, the official statement and the tax compliance agreement are referred to here, together herein as the college documents. Therefore, be it resolved by the governing body of Garden City Community College as follows. Section one authorization and approval of college documents and declaration of trust. A, the college documents and declaration of trust are hereby approved and sustained substantially the form submitted to. To and, and reviewed by the governing body on the date here of which such changes here therein as shall be approved by the chairman and chair. Chairman's execution of the college documents to the conclusive evidence of such approval. B, obligation of the college to pay basic rent payments as defined as a lease under the lease shall constitute a current expense of the college and shall not in any way be construed. To be an indebtedness of liability of the college and convention of the application constitutionally or statutory. Suchatory limitations of requirement concerning the creation of indebtedness or liability of the college and all provisions of the lease shall be. construed so as give effect to such intent. See, the chairman is hereby authorized to and directed to execute and deliver the college documents and to approve changes of the declaration of trust on behalf of. And as the act of the deed of the college, secretary of the board. Of and as the act of the deed of the college, secretary of the board trustees is hereby authorized to affix the college seal. To the college documents and attest said seal. Section two, official statement and tax and security matters. The final official statement is hereby authorized and approved, supplementing, amending and completing the preliminary official statement. With such changes therein and additions thereto thereto as shall be approved by the officer of the college. Executing the final official statements, said officer. Execution, execution thereof to the conclusive. Evidence of said. Said officers approval thereof and public distribution of the final official statement by the purchaser of the refunding certificates. Of participation are in all respects hereby authorized and approved. The chairman of the college is hereby authorized to execute and deliver the final official statement on behalf of. And as the act of the deed of the college for the purpose of enabling the original purchaser of certificates, the underwriter to comply with the requirements of rule. Fifteen C two dash one two. B one of securities and exchange commissions, the college hereby deems the information regarding the college contained in the preliminary official statement to be. Final as of its date, except for the omission of such information as permitted by rule fifteen C two dash one two B one. And the appropriate officers of the college are hereby authorized, if requested, to provide the underwriter a letter of certification. To such effect. And to take such other actions or execute on such other documents as such officers in their reasonable judgment deem necessary to enable the underwriters to comply with the requirement. In order to comply with the provisions of the rule and directives of the SEC. The governing body of the college hereby approves a form of disclosure undertaken substantially in the form of presented here within. The chairman is hereby directed to execute this disclosure undertaking with such changes as legal counsel to the college and chairman shall approve. Whose signature thereon shall constitute conclusive evidence of such approval. A copy of the exposure undertaking shall be placed in the permanent records of the college and shall be available for public inspection during regular business hours. Section three, further authority, the college shall and the officials. The agents of the college are hereby authorized to and directed to take such action, expend. Such funds and execute such other documents, certificates and instruments as. As may be necessary or desirable to carry out and comply with the intent of this resolution. And to carry out, comply with. And perform the duties of the college with respect to the college documents. The other documents authorized or approved hereby and project without limiting the. Orgone, the chairman is hereby authorized to execute a tax compliance agreement and other closing documents and if required. To execute the certificate of agreement to allow the underwriter to comply with rule fifteen C two dash one two of the securities and exchange commission. Section four mandatory provisions pursuant to KSA seventy-one dash two oh one C, the college shall omit. From the college documents mandatory contract provisions of DA dash one four six A. Section five, effective date, the resolution shall take effect and be in full force from and after its passage of by the governing body.
You need to call in on this.
Well, it's one of those things you read it and you don't even know. Some of the words are like.
And when I read that kind of stuff, I can read it about three times before I understand exactly.
All right, board, we have a motion and a second to pass or to accept the. The bid from Country Club Bank in Western State Bank as presented and the resolution as. Dutifully read and presented, is there any other discussion? All right, let's call for a vote. Let's do a roll call vote.
Beth, Pedro, I.
David. Leonard hits I, like Washington I.
Shanda Smith, I.
Marilyn Douglas, I. So the motion passes, thank you.
Well, thanks, everyone.
Thanks, John.
We hope. We hope the interest rates maintain their current levels, so when we come up with a new money project. It'll be even more affordable for the college to do those improvements. So anyway, that's not, you haven't seen the last of me for a little while. So we'll see what happens next time.
Thank you, John. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks again. Bye bye.
Bye, John.
Bye bye.
That was really good news for everybody except Lake. All right, let's go to item E. Extension of the presidential contract. So this is a verbal item, it's not in your book. And so I would make the motion that we extend. Contract to President Ryan Rudin for one more year.
I second that.
We have a motion and a second, is there any other discussion? All right, let's do a verbal. Beth, Pedro, I.
David. Leonard hits I, like Washington I.
Shanda Smith, I.
Marilyn Douglas, I, thank you. Welcome aboard, Dr. Root.
Thank you.
All right, I am going to recuse myself while the rest of the board votes on items I and J. Because of potential conflict of interest.
If you go to page one twenty.
Actually, it's eighty-six first.
Oh, I'm sorry. I missed that one. Correct. Go to item or page eighty-six for discussion of this item.
Oh. I, oh, I. I don't know if this is kind of, I, I just make a motion that we approve items. I and J as presented. I, I know Marilyn recused herself because of those bids, but. They're confident, yeah. So I, I, I just make a motion that we approved I and J as presented.
I second it.
Oh. The discussion? Any discussion? One of the things I would like to mention is in seeking bids. We are complying with this and looking. There were, there were two things that were satisfied, the lowest bid, also the lowest bid was a local.
Wasn't it two local companies?
Yes.
Yeah, there were two, but the final bid was one local company. Uh, let's do a roll call vote. On the. David?
David.
Leonard hits I.
Like Washington I.
Shanda Smith, I.
And Beth Pedro, I. The. Board approves unanimously, well, with one explosion. That we award the two bids to D V Douglas Ruffey. Oh, do I, do I have a question?
Not the P V D guy approach will go to weather.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I, I underlined him in yellow. Oh, and the, so that would be then item.
I goes to P V Douglas, yes.
I goes to P V Douglas. And J goes to Weathercraft, once again, a local company. All those in favor of the correction, second.
David. Leonard hits I.
Like Washington I.
Shanda Smith, I.
And Beth Pedro, I. Okay, would you like to bring Marilyn Vick?
Thank you all for helping me through that.
I gracefully and gladly turn it back to you.
Okay. Okay. Folks, do we need a break?
Yeah.
Okay. Been asked for five minutes, all right? So we will recess for five minutes. I have the, we'll be back at seven forty-six. Okay.
We ordered.
How's the?
Interest rate.
Yeah, we ordered other covers, but. We're gonna do another set of glass.
Okay, I have seven forty-six, we'll come back into session. Shanda, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, thank you.
Did you take a break?
I'm still sitting in the same seat I've been sitting in. I got a good chauffeur at least.
All right, so before we move on to confirmation of monitoring reports, I just wanted to remind the board that as we were. Reviewing those items in the consent agenda for the purchase. If you recall, there was the option on some of those items to be. To be financed by the C O P or through the. Capital outlay, so. It's gonna be through the C O P, right? Okay.
Yes.
Oh, we.
Yeah.
Do we need to approve the rest of the consent and then the dollar?
No.
We set those out and then approved it.
Yep.
The exceptions for.
That's good, so everybody's clear on that?
Yeah.
There's.
Like putting some.
Sorry. Okay, confirmation monitoring ports, first of all, there are no reports for April. So we are reviewing reports from last month, we're reviewing the. Monitors and we are on page nine of our book. In general executive constraints. Two of them and they're pretty simple. So first of all, number ten, that the president shall not fail to ensure a safe and healthy environment. So that's a pretty simple statement and we give him the latitude of. Of defining that in his last, President Rudy's last report, there was multiple reports. From multiple. Aspects of the campus, from security. From student communication process. Introduced and freshman orientation, several. Comments and reports about COVID nineteen and how it was handled. Reports from student health services. Reports from facilities and how they were handling COVID nineteen changes. And lastly, title nine. So I guess my question back to you is, do you have any? Thoughts or comments on how Dr. Root interpreted this and or are you happy with it?
Personally, I think it says it very plain. And to the point.
I think he said a. Very satisfactory job of interpreting. The safety and providing healthy environment for our students. And I believe that if he. Wanted to expound on it, that he would. So. I don't think this. Any other indicators or any other more defining things that we could add? All right, moving on to number two then, the actual financial conditions at any time shall not incur fiscal jeopardy. Or compromise board end priorities. So that's. Language straight from Carver policy. Most important aspect of budgeting is accomplishing the ends. And it's a continuous process, not just a one-time look at something. So I feel like there's. I don't think there's anything there that's misinterpreted and I. Am satisfied with Dr. Rudy's interpretation and. How he meets the monitor. You guys have any comments on that? Okay. So we'll. No changes on those two. And then we have a couple more things to review. They are in front of you. So first of all, we're looking at the change that we approved or talked about last. Month on treatment of people. We added number. We added number six. Added five and six, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Fail to achieve diversity, equity, inclusion to help all students succeed. Fail to promote respect and, I should say, the president shall not fail to achieve diversity, equity, inclusion to help all students succeed. The president shall not fail to promote respect and accept acceptance of diverse individuals and awareness and educational opportunities for underrepresented populations. Are you guys happy with that wording? Okay, so I believe we need a motion for this one.
I'll make a motion that we approve the addition of five and six under the policy title Treatment of People.
And I'm sorry, I'm gonna back you up for a minute. The second page, no, this is a different one, isn't it?
Yeah.
Never mind, go ahead.
So I make a motion that we approve the addition of numbers five and six to the policy title Treatment of People as stated by Norman.
All right, so we have a motion in a second to approve the addition to treatment of people. Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Okay, so that carries. And then board job description is the second one that we are adding to. And that would be number seven. Advocate, our board job description is to advocate for the values of diversity, multiculturalism and compassion, respect and welcome all people equally.
I, okay, I make a motion that we add item seven or number seven to the policy title Board Job Description as stated by your.
I second that motion. That. All right, we have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Okay, so all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so those changes will be added to our policy governance. And I look forward to our work in this area. I think it's gonna be challenging, but I think it's a good thing to do. All right, I have two more pieces to bring forward. Let's start with governing style. These are for your first, these are your first review of this suggested revision. And it is in the italics there in the middle under number two. We talked about it a little bit last time, that we would utilize Robert's rules to guide the decorum of the meeting, facilitate dialogue and orderly decision-making. While ordering guidelines are needed, strategic, relevant dialogue and opportunity for board members to express opinions and ask questions are essential to decision-making. B, the clerk is charged with maintaining Robert's roles and advising the board to remain on task. And I propose that we included Robert's Rules of Order simplified. Shanda Smith and I worked on this together and we are proposing this as a revision. And that we would also include in an appendix to the back of our policy governance this Robert's Rule of Orders for review or reference. You guys have any thoughts about that? And then I might add that, right now, the clerk of our board is President Rudy. So he would be the one that would be watching this. Discussion.
I think it's good, and because from time to time we get all valid or that's maybe not the word to use, but we get confused, the Robert's Rules of Order makes, has a document for us to be able to fall back on when we do mistakes. Particularly at the time that it happens, we are made aware that we didn't do something as should have been by meeting.
Reference. Yeah. My guess is that there'll still be something from time to time that might happen that isn't covered in here, and I, and I know that President Rudy has the whole book of Robert's Rules for Reference, so that helps, but for me, as the chairperson, it was helpful to review this.
So are you, on, on the Robert's Rules, if I'm forward here, are we undertaking it as, I mean, I know that's how we go about, but are you charging this order that everyone kind of to to self, I guess, regulate the, and then if there's a question that we use Ryan as the, or is he actually regulating, saying, no, you're, you guys are out of line?
He is a referee. That's, that was my intention. How do you feel about that?
I don't know. I, I, I kind of have a, I mean, I don't, I don't know, that, it just seems it's, it's our meeting, it's our meeting, I mean, not that, I, I think he's he's.
He's not telling us what.
Right, no, he's just referencing if, if we're not making something right, and I, and I, I don't, I don't think I have a problem with it.
What, are you saying that you'd prefer someone else?
I don't know. I don't know that, I, I just don't know if it's charged the task of the board to, to regulate it, it's our meeting. I mean, that's just my kind of thought of it, whereas, nothing against Ryan by any stretch. It's just that, I don't know.
I think he's sort of the outside observer.
Right, and I, and I can see where that makes good sense. I.
I think we all have enough knowledge of the way you can do things. I like these, how to do things on here. I like reading that. But I agree with Blake, it's, it's our meeting and it can become too restrictive sometimes. And I think the reason this came up was the problem we had with a motion being made in a second and then it not ever getting to the floor, which according to Robert's Rules of Order, was not the proper thing to happen, and that spurred my, my interest in Robert's Rules of Order, and I, I like the way this says how to do things. But we're not always gonna do them exactly that way, and we may feel we wanna do something, and if it's way out of line and way out of left field, then somebody like Ryan needs to correct us on that and say, wait a minute, you're, you're not really doing it properly, but it's, I like it a little more informal.
Yeah, I think, I think, I think it's, I think it's good the way it is. My, my, just, my involvement or what I wanted to know is how much, and I, I think I gather that Ryan will really only step in if we can't obviously follow these or something, and he notices blatantly that we're misguided or something like that. I don't have a problem, and I do, I do see Beth's point of view of saying, you know, he's the outside, and if he recognizes something that he can bring a point to order, and so, I, I don't have a problem with that. I just, like you said, it's something that I, I don't think he's gonna get in the way of what he can do by any means.
Shanda, did you have anything you'd like to say or add?
Well, I think we're all kind of responsible individually to make sure when we are doing something, changing something, making a motion, that we're doing our best to follow Robert's Rules of Order. I think Ryan would be more of a resource when we go, whoa, this is where we're at, and we're not sure what's the best way to approach it. That's where I could see him maybe helping us out as a resource in that way.
I agree. I, I'm fine with that. Just good clarification.
All right, do you want to vote on this tonight, or do you want to roll it over for a moment?
Yeah. I, I'll make a motion that we add items A, B, and C under the number two of our policy title Governing Style as, as presented by you, Matt Turf. I'll second that motion, David.
So a motion in a second to approve governing style as revised and presented? Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Shanda?
Aye. Sorry, he didn't hit my button fast enough.
Okay, so this one is, the motion is approved. All right, one more, guys. Board Members' Code of Conduct. This is a policy governance piece that we have always had, but we thought it would be a good idea to review it on an annual basis and to take that one step further and sign that we acknowledge the responsibility of adhering to this code of conduct. And so that is the addition, it's number eight on the bottom in italics. Board members will acknowledge acceptance of their responsibility to adhere this code of conduct indicated by an annual signature. And I have to give credit to Jody, who developed our signature paper. And the intention is that this will be done on an annual basis. Comments? I did not. I, I would be open to that.
I just, I either, I didn't know if it's, since it's adopt, if it gets adopted today, that's, that's.
I think that's probably reasonable, because new board members would be coming on.
I think it's more appropriate for January, because if we do have new board members, we don't wait till April to sign something, or, or, I mean, even if, yeah.
And I think we could, you know, that, that thing would do, sign that since we have.
That's usually in December though, or something.
That's, that's same timeframe, but we, we got coordinated towards this at the same point.
How do you feel about signing for this year?
I'll sign anything if you want.
Yeah.
It's our, it's our policy.
Yeah, yeah, well, I, I would, I made the motion that we add number eight to the policy title Board Members' Code of Conduct and to go ahead and sign tonight for this year.
I'll second that motion.
So we have a motion in a second to revise Board Members' Code of Conduct policy as presented and proceed with signing the acknowledgement form for the year 2021. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor? Beth, aye.
David, aye. Leonard, aye.
Blake, aye.
Shanda, aye.
Carolyn, aye. Thank you, guys. So go ahead and pass these around and we each can sign one. Okay, we are through the item four and on item five. Under any public comments? Mr. Lewis?
You should be free to talk.
Hello, can you see me or hear me? This is. Hello?
We can hear you.
Okay, all right. I'll proceed then without video, although I do have a camera on my computer. I want to thank you for giving me a few minutes to speak about a bill now before Governor Kelly, or her signature or veto, whose passage or defeat will have a direct impact on women's sports at the college. The bill known as the Fairness in Women's Sports Act would ensure that women in sports continue to compete on a level playing field with other women by prohibiting biological men who identify as women from competing against them. I urge the board to support the bill with a resolution to be communicated to Governor Kelly, our state legislators, and the junior college athletic governing bodies. Let me explain. In 1972, Congress passed Title IX. This was landmark legislation that guaranteed women equal opportunity in education, including sports. I was in high school and college in the 1970s. I witnessed firsthand girls' sports teams spring up as schools implemented Title IX's mandate. Female peers came out of their shells, gaining physical strength and confidence, and those benefits have carried on into their adult lives. Almost fifty years on, Title IX is seen as a resounding success, substantially benefiting countless girls. These benefits, however, are now threatened by a presidential order that radically reinterprets Title IX to require biological men to be allowed to compete against women in sports. The order turns Title IX on its head, robbing girls of the opportunity to compete in sports as boys do in their sports on a level playing field. The science is clear. Even after therapies and surgeries, biological men maintain a decided advantage over women in sports. A recently published, peer-reviewed, sports medicine article entitled "Transgender Women in Female Category of Sports: Perspectives on Testosterone Suppression and Performance Advantage" concludes, and I quote, "Sporting performance is strongly influenced by a range of physiological factors. Many of these physiological factors differ significantly between biological males and females. This confers large sporting performance advantage on biological males over females." Renee Richards agrees. She was a pioneer transgender who competed on the women's professional tennis circuit back in the 70s and 80s. However, since retiring from tennis, Richards, now a medical doctor, has come to believe that biological men should not compete against women. Hence, Dr. Richard opposes the International Olympic Committee's 2004 ruling that biological men can compete after they have had surgery and two years of hormonal therapy. In a 2014 interview, Dr. Richard said, quoting, "Having lived for the past thirty years, I know if I had had surgery at the age of twenty-two and then at twenty-four went on tour, no genetic woman in the world would have been able to come close to me. And so I've reconsidered my opinion." There is two, there is one thing a transgender woman unfortunately cannot expect to be allowed to do, and that is to play professional sports in her chosen field. She can get married and live as a woman, but this limitation, that's just life. I know because I lived it, close quote. Let me now briefly respond to some of the arguments put forth by those opposing the. put forth by those opposing the Fairness Act.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes?
I failed to mention that comments are limited to five minutes, so I just wanted to let you know you have two minutes left.
Thank you very much. I'll, I'll try and be brief. Some argue that the Fairness and Act is a bigoted, too bigoted targeting of transgenders. I beg to differ. Science isn't bigoted. Renee Richards isn't bigoted. And the millions of girls who just want to compete on a level playing field aren't bigoted. Others say that passage will cause Kansas to lose revenues as sports organizations pull tournaments from the state. But Title IX is not about revenue enhancement. It is about giving women equal opportunity in sports. Revenue loss should not trump fundamental fairness and equal opportunity. I would also suggest that some sporting events might come into the state specifically because women here will have a level playing field. So where does this stand in Topeka? On Friday, both houses of the legislature passed the act with votes just shy of a veto-proof majority. Senator Dahl passed, while Representatives Wheeler and Jennings voted in favor of the bill. Governor Kelly has voiced opposition to the bill and is expected to veto it. It is expected that a veto override vote will occur between May 3rd and May 11th. I know that May 11th is the date of your next regularly scheduled meeting. Because passage or defeat of this act will have a direct impact on the college's women's sports teams, it is vitally important that the board speak clearly and resolutely in favor of the act and do sell, do so well before the expected override vote. Thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you very much for your presentation.
You're welcome.
Any other public speakers? Right. President's report?
Yeah, just some, some updates. Have had the selections for the ambassador scholars for this upcoming academic year. I'm excited to be able to announce we had six interviews that we've conducted and through that have selected the two ambassadors. Angelina Serrano of Garden City High School and Heidi Mercado of Southwestern Heights. Both of these students are coming forward with very strong backgrounds academically as well as leadership-wise, and both will receive $1,500 scholarships for being selected as ambassadors this next year. A couple of updates I did want to provide to the board just on some of the student stimulus funding. This spring semester, the college had allocated $500,000 to be available for student grant funding. And we have held that to where it would be up to $800 if students can request to be able to offset impact that they've had from COVID. As of yesterday, we have allocated $437,693 and distributed, distributed that to 583 students. So tremendous work that's being done by the business office, financial aid, to be able to get that money in students' hands and help them offset their, their impact. On that same accord, this summer, we have also allocated some funding in the amount of $100,000 that we will make available. And as of yesterday, we will receive 256 applications for summer. We'll go through the process for awarding once the summer session starts and award after certification. And then just last point of contact or comment there to make you aware of. Graduation commencement is upcoming. We will be holding commencement on May 7th. We're going to be doing a hybrid ceremony. But we will have the gym set up in its traditional format. We will have the stage for the board members and the administrators to be able to sit on. We will be having the students walk across the stage. It can be escorted by two family members. And that way they're able to receive their diploma and also have a professional photo taken there for, for graduation as well. In advance of commencement, we will be filming all of the speeches, the student awards that we, that we give out, as well as national anthem and, and other things. Following graduation ceremony being filmed on May 7th. Then we'll take about a week there working with our group here internally to be able to compile the video together that we will premiere on May 15th at 2:00 PM on our YouTube page. So it'll be similar formats to what we had last year, with the exception that students are actually going to have their names read while walking across the stage, having pictures and receiving the diploma covers. And this will be just a step that the college is going to be able to ensure safety as we end the spring semester and hopefully back to regular ceremonies as we go forward.
Not shaking hands in that, right? So just standing. Just a week.
Yeah, I would say, you know, whatever your comfort level is, I mean, we'll have.
What are you going to do?
I will probably shake each.
Right, and each person?
Doctor, that I, the, I, I see the commencement, not to interrupt, but are we doing, you know, award banquets like in previous times? I, I.
Yeah, all that. Yes, Penning, John Deere, Criminal Justice. We'll also have our student award banquet, faculty's having award banquet. And so we'll have a gym set up there in the same format. We'll get those dates and everything out there too. Just tell me where and when I'm supposed to be.
Thank you. Incidental information, it wasn't very much in there. Do you guys have any questions about it? Comments? Okay, report from Fannie County Economic Development?
No report.
Report from KACCT?
No, no report. President Ruda and I do have an evaluation to perform for our executive director Heather. And we will get that taken care of. The deadline is April 25th. I, I think Ryan and I were mentioning this before the meeting started was that, you know, the Zoom meetings, you think you lose contact and so forth, but I've learned to really appreciate them and the fact that as she reports things, the people she presents and, and represents the community college is amazing. And she, she makes a difference for us.
Accreditation update?
So Mark does have some things that, you know, as Perla has mentioned, just last week, we have spent numerous hours watching the HLC Annual Conference. So instead of having it in Chicago as usual, had a virtual conference which, you know, enabled a lot more individuals from campus to be able to attend and listen into the sessions, which was a very, very much positive. One of the sessions was Mark, you know, Mark and I were talking. One of the sessions that he had attended, he actually outlined some of the most cited core components that come from site visits. And so we felt like instead of innovating, you were going through all five of those. We're going to split those up over the course of the next five months and just take them one by one. So I'll kind of turn it over there to Mark and he can walk through the first four components from one of the sessions for HLC.
Thank you. Are you all able to see the PowerPoint? Okay, perfect. Perfect. So again, we're just working on doing sort of quick five-minute monthly check-ins about accreditation and where we are as an institution and what we're working on. And I've come to sort of appreciate as I'm preparing these that it's also an accountability measure for us to just have another audience to talk to these things about. So I appreciate that you are all entertaining these items in your meetings. And so as, as Dr. Ruda mentioned, this is kind of an overview. You also all have this in paper in front of you or in your binders, if that's easier to see than on the TV screen. But this, this table just gives you an overview of five years of the most commonly cited core components. And I won't spend a ton of time on them. You can see though that really everything lies in either criteria four or criterion five. And that deals specifically with the quality of our teaching and learning program and how we assess that to determine quality and also on the operations of the college in terms of governance, planning, and resources. And today, this evening, we're going to spend time looking just at 4B, which is inside of the Teaching and Learning Assessment of Teaching and Learning. But over the next several months, we'll go through other ones of these. And in that accreditation binder, you do have the full list of criteria for accreditation. So I'm also happy to answer questions if you have those tonight or, or in the future. So just kind of a preview of where we are headed. So I won't read everything to you on the screen. And in order to keep this to five minutes, I'm going to be going kind of quick. But again, I'm always happy to answer questions tonight or any other time. So Criterion Four is really about teaching and learning, evaluation, and improvement. The institution demonstrates responsibility for the quality of its education programs, learning environments, and support services, and it evaluates their effectiveness for student learning through processes designed to promote continuous improvement. And specifically, the component 4B says that the institution engages in ongoing assessment of student learning as a part of its commitment to the educational outcomes of students. So the next several slides just go over each one of these subcomponents to give you an idea of the sorts of things that we will be presenting. And just as another insight, criteria or, or component 4B was a portion that the site team, when they visited Garden City Community College last time, raised some concerns about. And I'll talk a little bit more about that and what we're doing to make sure that that does not happen again. So 4B1 really talks about the institution has effective processes for assessment of student learning and for achievement of learning goals in academic and co-curricular offerings. When I think about this, I think about the sorts of things that we present to you in our ends reports. That's a, one type of assessment where we collect data to help show that we are, we prove to you, our goal is to prove to you all as a, as a board that we are working on and doing these things effectively. The things that we will have, that we did not have the last time the site visited, is we have three years of data this time. And that was really the site team's primary concern previously was that we had clear processes and we were following them, but they had not yet produced data. We'll also be relying on our assessment manual on the Student Learning Assessment Team Committee minutes. We're now producing an annual assessment newsletter that kind of gives a big picture overview of all the things we're learning as faculty and staff work on assessment of learning and co-curricular assessment. So that's an overview of 4B1. 4B2 states that the institution uses the information gained from assessment to improve student learning. So we have to not only gather this data, but then we have to do something with it. And 4B2 is really where we provide examples and say we are learning things and implementing changes based on what we're learning in assessment. And we would have, we would, in, in the assurance argument section for 4B2, we would just go through and provide examples of where we are making changes. So I just wanted to highlight just a couple co-curricular examples. So in the instructional design office, which really supports students and faculty in the digital learning environments, there are, one of the things that they learn from doing assessment in the instructional design office is that in order to reach our part-time faculty who oftentimes have other jobs, maybe they're teaching for us online or they're teaching part-time in the evenings, we really need to have asynchronous trainings available for them that they can access on their own time. And so that's something that they clearly identified and they have started deploying. And that's a great example that we can use. The camp program on campus, the migrant, college assistant migrant program, I believe, they have a specific goal as a result of their assessment of promoting peer tutoring. And what they learned was that some of the students in their program have a difficult time maintaining a full-time load. And so they learned that, and then their plan to address that is to promote peer tutoring. And so we'll be able to track that initiative also as we go along. The whole goal is just to, to show that we are in fact learning from our assessment data. 4B3 just says that the institution's processes and methodologies to assess student learning reflect good practice, including the substantial participation of faculty, instructional, and other relevant staff members. So just saying that our, our assessment processes, not, not only do we do them, we learn from them and we implement change, but also that we are following good practice as we, as we go through all of this. So there are wonderful things that have been set place at this in our assessment practices far beyond before I, I came here. But the college's assessment framework was developed from the Assessment 101 model. The faculty use nationally-normed value rubrics for the essential skills assessment. That's one of the reports, the ends reports that the SLAT team comes and presents to the board here once a year. We are tracking part-time and full-time student learning outcome at the course level participation rate. So we know how many full-time faculty and part-time faculty are participating. And there are plans to increase that every year until we hit 100% completion all the time. And then I think the other hallmark, and this is really throughout all of HLC's expectations, is that a lot of this work is faculty-driven, and that is very solidly established here. And you've had members of the SLAT team come and present to you about faculty assessment or assessment being faculty-driven at Garden City Community College. So I think that's excellent. So all of that is just an overview. I'm happy to answer any questions, comments, or concerns that you may have or not, up to you.
All right. This is Shanda, the voice from the sky right now. Of all of these 4B bullet points and sub-points, what do you see as the biggest challenge that our team faces to be ready for?
That's a good question. I think, I don't know that I have a firm assessment on it. I will say, on which, where I'm concerned, I will say that I feel, I, I look at the, the entire process overall, and I feel fairly confident about all of our practices at the institution. I think it will be very important to be able to show specific and clear examples like the ones that we gave, that I gave tonight, but also additional ones that we are using assessment data. And so that's something that I will be, I'm actually leading the writing team on Criterion Four. So that's something I'll be ensuring that we have is really tracking down the evidence that we're using the assessment data. Does that give you one answer?
Yes, thank you.
Mark, this is Marilyn. The, when you talk about the course assessments by part-time and full-time, are you talking about part-time, full-time faculty doing their assessments? Or do students do the assessments? Or SLAT does the assessment?
Yeah, those are, so those course outcome assessments, those are performed by the, the instructors in the class. And so full-time faculty participation rates are obviously very, very high. We know where they, you know, we know where they live here on campus in their offices. So it's the, it's the part-time faculty that we have been, and SLAT specifically, that faculty-driven team has been working to increase those participation rates through better communication, through trainings, those sorts of things.
Any other questions or comments?
Thank you, as always.
Yeah, it's, it's just kind of vague from this perspective to get all the way to that, to this faculty's desk and their assessment and what they're assessing and what they're doing about it. That's the part that we don't know. But I, I mean, I hear your plan. I just, we just don't hear what happens next. So I'll be curious to hear that.
Have you used that data?
Yeah, yeah. You know, I like the specifics that he gave, but those are more procedural rather than content. And for me, I'm thinking that these guys, the reviewers are looking for, you know, did the content, did the students learn what they were supposed to?
Collected the data, how did you?
Yeah. And if they didn't do it, what did you do about it?
Yeah.
And I think, I think the, the
least the way I get it though is, those are going to be questions more for Mark and for the administration team, not necessarily us. We, I mean, we have to understand the process of it and, and know that we get reports from Dr. Ruda through, through the ends and know that point, but I, I know we want the meat of it, but I don't think it's really as important to us. In one, it's just down the line.
I would, I would also add that the examples that I gave were specifically co-curricular. So things that connect to the learning plan, but are not directly inside of the classroom. And so, so there are, I can't think of them off the top of my head because they live in hundreds of little spreadsheets saved on drives. And we will be mining those spreadsheets for the, for the data. But, but there are just as many specific examples of, we changed a unit inside of a classroom. Or the department as a whole decided to change how they, they do a final exam. So there are, there are lots of those. And I'm happy to share those also as time goes on or as you have questions. But you're right, that, that, that not only procedural changes are important in learning from assessment data, but the in-class, on-the-ground content is also an important thing.
Sure. And to Blake's comment, it really isn't our job to
I mean, we want
to judge and be part of that, but
I think we just get worried because of what maybe they will say or ask. And I think they're smart enough to know that that's really not our job. So I don't think we have to worry as much, but it's a good idea to at least get an overview of knowing that.
I mean, I think on the boards, on the board side, I mean, there's a few points here. I mean, probably the questions that that will be asked from the site team more than anything are going to be specific to essential skills. How is a board getting assurance that the college is meeting the essential skills? What's being done in order to provide you the evidence that essential skills are not only being evaluated, but they're we're making plans for how we can further embed them into the college. You know, how is it being proven to the board that the students are meeting essential skills?
Like SLAT, knowing that SLAT is our process or different things like that, I think, you know, not necessarily.
And, and I think the handbook particularly will keep us updated as Mark presents more. I, I just have confidence that they will have us well-knowledgeable when the, when the team comes on campus.
At least we can talk the talk.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, we've read them plenty of times that we can talk the talk and we'll practice those.
It's going to be rehearsed, it's going to, you know, so I mean, I think that
Yeah.
when it comes to that, I mean, you know, the example that I would give there is, is on the essential skills. Let's talk specifically about awareness of diversity. How can you as a board member speak specifically to what's being done on campus to know of awareness of diversity? We have students involved, we have faculty, staff involved in University Equity Inclusion Committee. There's specific tasks that are going to be a part of further embedding diversity awareness across campus. So those are, you know, again, those are things where we will rehearse those questions. The more you can provide concrete examples of your understanding, the better off it is.
Right.
Yeah.
Right. And I think as we have questions like Marilyn had tonight, that clarifies things for me as, as you all ask questions. So.
I will say to support your, your, your comment there is that as a, as a, as a teacher for many, many, many years, the best way to learn is to have conversations and put things in your own words. And, and so I think that's one of the great functions of being able to come in front of you and do these presentations is, is to give you sort of fodder for those conversations. So I do really appreciate your questions and the time tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. And we look forward to many more. Okay. We are on ownership meeting. Does anybody have anything they'd like to share?
I do.
Oh, go ahead. Go ahead.
No, no, you finished first. You're closer to her.
That's all right. I can hit her later.
Okay. I, it's interesting that this Robert Schule's orders came up and how to do things. You want to bring up a new idea before the group. It says after recognition by the president of the board, present your motion. I'm not going to present a motion, but I want to make sure I have recognition by the chairman from this point on. What Mr. Lewis was talking about is a very hot item around Garden City. If you went to the Legislative Coffee two weeks or whatever ago it was. And if you'll go to the one this Saturday, you're going to find out, I think there that it's still going to be a pretty hot topic. And in my mind, I think that Garden City Community College should come up with a resolution. I'm not going to ask for that tonight. I got a copy of a resolution that I'd like for you to look at, take home, let's bring it back next month. And I'd like to have it on the agenda. In my mind, this is a moral question more than anything else, but I'm going to hand these to you. And it's up to you. It's our board. You think we might need it or not need it? I think, I think we need to bring it up and make ourselves be known.
Will this be too late? Will this be too late for the?
No. I think we still have a little bit of time. Doesn't really matter whether it's too late for the vote or not. I think the board needs to make a statement of their opinion on this. Whether it's a law or whether it isn't. But that's for us to decide. And that's why I'm bringing it up to the board. I have visited with Dr. Ruda some on this. And it's not an easy answer. And it's not an easy thing to resolve. So just, I'm throwing, putting it out there and y'all make up your own mind.
Leonard, I appreciate the work you put into this. And, and I agree, we can put it on our agenda for next month for a discussion.
Yeah.
You guys okay with that?
That's all I have, Beth.
Oh. I'm going to remove this just for a minute. I promise not to read on you. I would like to acknowledge the passing of one of our former science teachers. Dr. Bill Coons passed away in Victoria, Texas, Thursday, April 8th last week. Very unexpectedly, he was sixty, just barely 65 years of age. Why I want to bring Bill up to you. He, he came in the mid-eighties or early mid-eighties and left here, I think, in the late nineties. He had been at Victoria Community College in Victoria, Texas for the last 25 years and was seriously thinking about retirement, to spend more time with his family. He has a son and a daughter that still live in the area. One is, his son is, this is just part of his job in town is with the Kloss Wood Pellet store down on Main Street. His daughter is in, in said Hope Com area. I do not know her married name. The thing I want to share with you about Bill is he did something for the community college transfer students. And the day that Bill came, he came to us from Kansas State University. He had been on the faculty. And I still remember him in the middle of the campus coming up to me and saying, how are our transfer students doing? Is there anything I can do to help? Interesting. And I'm just going to share the one story. He, as I said, was, was, he, he, the students were his from the day he came here, whether they were in his class or not. And so one of the, one of the classes at Kansas State University that he had been very involved with was called Human Body One and Human Body Two, four hours first semester, four hours second. This was the most feared class of any of our allied health or majors, and they had to take it there. They could get by with, with our Anatomy One and our Anatomy Two. So they took 10 hours and they, but it was one of these things that, that he did for us. Never, that never had a transfer student been involved in the student assistant program at that school. They all had to be dying in the wool, the main, you know, the courses taken there. And what these five students did, they set up the lab programs and, and ran them themselves to make sure everything was okay. He recommended one of our students for that program. She was accepted and from then on, they used transfer students as well as, but it was a non-paying thing. But anyway, I did, I just tell you what the student thought. Her first reaction when she went to K-State and was in the program and they were all looking like her. In fact, they all got T-shirts that year that said T and pointed that way, which would mean she's a transfer student. The interesting thing was, in her words, the first day she went to class, she was one, she was number 200 of 400 students in that class. When she heard the instructor starting to give the lecture and so forth, she remembered back to her time here when Dr. Coons, she was one of 20. And she thought, he taught us all of this. There were challenges, but what Bill did for us there for the transfer student was, was wonderful. And I'd like to acknowledge his passing. Anyway, I mean, we've had hundreds of excellent instructors here, and I do not cut into them at all. I just want to acknowledge Bill Coons, Dr. Bill Coons, as one of the very best.
It's obvious he left a big impression on me.
It was so funny because as, as a dean of students and working with the transfer stuff, and he, it was so interesting about a year ago, he just stopped in town to see his children. And he came by. And he said, so who's worrying about the transfer students now? I said, well, the president down. So, no, he was a good one. And he was so funny. But he, he expected and remained unexpected from his students.
I have something to do with that. I was approached by one of the workers down at the rodeo. Said this was the first year and they wanted to commend the AD for showing up for two days. Said they'd never seen the athletic director down there before. And they've worked several years. So send that confirmation.
Any other items to share? Okay. To finish up, I'd like you to fill out your board self-assessment. One or two minutes to fill those out, please, and we'll review them tonight. Yeah, the presidential evaluation. Number four. I, I commented on your board, yeah. I, I wrote a comment on myself. I caught myself, you caught myself giving in through weeds instead of saying focus on this. So I appreciate that.
I wasn't quite sure about, in regards to the HLC, if it's referring to just tonight or as a clear overview as a collective poll right now. And so like, what, it just, this is just for tonight, what goes on tonight, right?
I, um, no, I think my intention was
As a whole, right? Okay. Cause I read it as just like what was presented tonight and that's all.
Okay. Did, so I put myself as a disagree on there. So I feel like there's still more to learn.
Right, true.
Oh, okay.
That what?
There's a whole lot to learn.
I did, I didn't mark myself down so much because I've been through it so many times on those sites. And then I did participate as, as a community member when they came up. And, and that team, on that time led us through what they, what they wanted us to understand is the role. They didn't tell us what to say. But they were very good in saying, okay, we are here to do the following. So hello, Sancho?
Come and say hello.
So anyway, that's, that's kind of why I worried my way I did.
We're just talking about this board self-assessment. You're welcome to fill it out real quick.
And Sean, those are cards and I haven't done yet either.
Okay.
For the rodeo.
Former boarder. There's some other athletic events that are still coming up. You guys are welcome to attend as well as planning on commencement on Friday, May 7th and all of the other activities that'll be coming up. Joanie will keep us informed.
What time do we need to be there for tonight?
Probably, I think six would be one year in the morning.
Hour? Then I'll leave at seven.
Yeah, we'll have pictures here still.
All right. We are at the bottom of our agenda. Thank you very much for enduring this one. I think it was, we had lots of good news tonight. Thank you very much for enduring this one. I think it was, we had lots of good news tonight. So thank you, Carla. Thank you for your diligence.
Thank you. The intro nature of my. It's just great that they continue.
All right. So I declare this meeting adjourned. Thank you.
I seriously was like, what is that? I'm looking to see if somebody's not muted or. Oh, because the, the high pitched birds was all we could hear for that phase. Yes.
For what?
I don't care. Not very long ago. When the windows were open.
It's amazing. Like they said, the amount that gets picked up like with creeping of paper is much more sensitive than voice.
Firsthand.
Amazing they can hear the voices when it's up there, but not when it's there on the table. What is it? What are they talking about? The noises they were, sound that were scaring over the phone. She was hearing the birds outside.
Oh, really?
Yes. Quite vividly. Not just a little bit. I started to think somebody makes a shop and calls my bird because.
Marilyn, I'm headed up to my tent on your way.
You are. What's doing?
Big Fork. It's a glacier park way up in the north. We're in races.
Race?
Three races up there over paper.
You.
It looks beautiful. I'm flying in Spokane, Washington and driving. There's no good way. It's either flying there or Bozeman, Montana and driving, but should be an interesting, should be.
Drive will be.
The drive will be.
Is this one for me to sign?
Yes, ma'am. Sorry.
Skeeter was worried. I was like, this might be a little heavy. He already had it set up that he could pull in here and Jacob was going to come pick him up. So we. I'm like, no, we're pretty close. So he decided to. Well, maybe.
It'll be, it'll be, yeah. I, I hope so. I'll take it a little cooler.
No, I just said we'd be right there.
I have standing that live up there.
Yeah, a place to keep these.
Is that where, that's where it is actually.
Yeah, oh, yeah, just stand out there and it'll be all right.
I, I don't want to leave. I couldn't fly, I couldn't fly into there unless I go off color or spring. So I'm just flying out of here and.
I need to know anything about H L.
It's big board for Playcell.
Good luck, yeah. I'll try. Three races.